So to remind you, our vision of course in the school district of Milton is that we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And the mission to support that is that the school district of Milton, in partnership with our community, prepares our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. And having said that, I would call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, May 8th, and have you join me in a pledge of allegiance. This is behind me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Rich, are you aware of any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda. I move to approve the agenda as presented. I'll second that.
Thank you. That motion from Rick, seconded by Dave, to approve our agenda as we see it. Any questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And our minutes, follow up next, which are in board docs for everyone's referral.
I'll move to approve the minutes to the regular meeting held on April 24, 2023, as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. That motion was from Jennifer, seconded by Dave, to approve the minutes from our previous meeting. Questions on the minutes? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. And obviously, following minutes, we typically do vouchers.
I'll move to approve the general checking account vouchers, totaling $961,691.26, as presented.
Second.
Thank you, John. That motion from John, seconded by Rick, to approve our checking account vouchers in the amount that he enumerated. Are there any questions on the vouchers? Seeing none, all in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The vouchers are approved. And welcome, Ms. Mesa. Our student council report.
Okay, so for tonight's report, I'm starting off with from April 24th, it was at the Benji Barnes Farm, and it was an amazing experience for many of the students. And the animal barn in the back and the spores were especially a hit. This week, the ambiance will take place on Friday night at 7:00. And it's a really good way to finish off, this is our last week of AP testing at the high school. And then also the student council, last Friday, took a field trip to the Oregon Minimum Security Prison. It was very eye-opening in regards to the dangers of drugs and alcohol and the consequences associated with that. Then we also kind of determined there was a common theme of going down the wrong path, starting especially in middle school, which we thought was very interesting. And we were able to sit down with a panel of three who shared their stories with us and their life lessons they've picked up on throughout their experience in their prison system. I also think that we picked out something, the education system plays such a vital role in addressing early concerns with students, and it can prevent future unfortunate circumstances as well. We then went to the Union South on the UW Madison campus, where we got to see some campus life, and we also got to eat there. And we even met up with a couple former Mountain Student Council members who now attend Madison as well. Thank you, guys.
Can I ask you a question?
Here you go.
Would you be able to communicate what you learned about the middle school to maybe the middle school staff from a student council perspective, that they could share with the students there and one of their learnings?
Yeah, sure. So I think what's really, I always thought that it was, everyone says in high school you went down the wrong path, in high school you went down the wrong path. It was really interesting because all of the, all three of the men we spoke to quoted, like, we went down the wrong path, starting at that age when I got to friend groups that were participating in illegal activities. And I really think that a lot of them said they came from, their siblings were orthodontists and very, very successful. It was very interesting how the friend group you get into in middle school can affect the entire rest of your life. It was very, very fascinating. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mesa. Public comment, had no one signed up, we will move beyond that to Rich, a superintendent update.
A couple things I don't want to highlight with the Red Hawk highlights. Today was the last professional development day for our staff. We started the day with a couple hours of wellness activities for all staff, reported to Milton High School. There were a number of different options for people to take part in, both physical wellness, mental health wellness, financial wellness, a whole bunch of different sessions that people could choose. We got very good feedback from folks about the options that were available. I thought that went really well, so thank you to our HR departments for the work that they did in coordinating, planning, and also thanks to everyone that led the different sessions. We had some staff members lead some of the sessions, we also had some community members lead some of the sessions. A couple student notes that I want to highlight. When I congratulate Milton High School junior, Chance Austin, was selected to serve on the Wisconsin Agriculture and Fish Council. And that's part of the State of Wisconsin Department of Ag, Trade and Consumer Protection. And the youth council members worked together across the state to highlight ag career opportunities and encourage youth engagement in agriculture. So congratulations to Chance Austin. And also congratulations to Grace Shang, another Milton High School senior. Grace was selected as a National Merit Scholarship finalist. It's a really incredible accomplishment, it speaks to her dedication, hard work, and intelligence, and in leadership. And national winners will be announced between now and July. So that will be coming up. And then congratulations to 10 students, and I won't list all of them, but one of them present, so I'll put Mesa on the spotlight there. Mesa was one of 10 Milton High School students who were recognized at the Badger Conference Top Scholars event yesterday. So, Top Scholars, we're proud of this student. It's a really nice event, it was paused for a couple years during COVID, and we started it up again this year. And speaking of scholarships, this week on Wednesday, May 10th, is our annual scholarship event in Milton High School. Large number of scholarships that are awarded, encourage people to attend if they haven't been to it before, it's a great event. And it really spotlights the outstanding work that our students do to earn these scholarships, but it's also a great example of the strong community support we have, because there are thousands and thousands of dollars that are part of these scholarships that community members and organizations put in place for the scholarship winners. So a great opportunity for Red Hawk students to continue their education following graduation. Last week and this week, different schools are celebrating Staff Appreciation Week, so we want to thank and share our appreciation with all of our staff across the district, at all of our schools, and in all of our departments. Want to thank all of our staff members, they do great things throughout the year, and they have a strong impact on our students, families, and communities. So wonderful job for our staff throughout the year, and we recognize them not only in staff appreciation, we totally take special effort to recognize them during this time.
Okay, thanks, Rich. Any questions on our Red Hawk highlights? All right. We move down to three, our HR committee's been busy, I think they met last week on May 3rd, so we'll let Rick share the topics that they waded through.
Thanks, Joe. The HR committee met last week on May 3rd. First item on the agenda is the 2023-24 Teaching Staff FTE baseline. The administrative team is having ongoing discussions on the preliminary budget for the coming year, with the goal of making reductions through retirements and resignations rather than through layoffs. Staffing FTE counts for the coming year, will come to the board for approval once these staffing meetings are finalized. Any questions on that? Or, Rich, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't have anything else to add. I think that we're working on that goal of continuing our reductions through attrition for the coming year.
All right, next up is discussion and possible action on 2023-24 Notice of Individual Teacher Contract Renewal Letters. There's a memo from Chris attached in board docs, some highlights of this memo are that the state mandated deadline for issuing contract renewal letters to teaching staff is May 15th. For the 2023-24 year, the Board of Education will issue contract renewal letters for employment to all current teachers who have not retired or resigned. These renewal letters basically state that the staff will not make any less next year than they had made this past year. There is an example of this letter in board docs also. When the base wage bargaining is completed, updated contracts will be issued, including salary and assignment. The committee is looking at dates in June to begin the negotiations with MEA. Reductions to teaching positions for 2023-24 are being made through attrition, as I stated before, thus there will be no letters of non-renewal issued to any teachers. The renewal letters also include an increase in the liquidated damages assessed if a teacher chooses to resign. These amounts have not increased in many years, and the committee feels that the increase is necessary, given the difficulty and costs involved in replacing teaching staff. The proposed amount is $1,000 if the teacher resigns after July 1st, and $1,500 if the teacher resigns after August 15th. This is a doubling of the current damages. This one is an action item?
Just a couple quick things that I'll share on that. One is around, Rick can share, the proposed, the recommended change from the committee on the liquidated damages and the admin team's support of that change in looking at liquidated damages, expenses from other, or charges from other districts. We often get people that we hire after whatever the other districts have in place for their deadlines, and they typically are considerably higher than ours that have been at that same level for since they were instituted. And then the other is that, I want to reinforce that, we will be getting those letters out pending board approval tonight, but we'll send letters out starting tomorrow to all teaching staff. Our plan is that we would offer those contracts to all of our teachers who are still with us, we have some who have retired or resigned, but in our efforts to make our budget reductions without needing to lay off any teachers, we are looking, that we will be able to do that. So if you recall, there were, earlier there were five preliminary notices of non-renewal that the board approved. We are not issuing permanent letters of non-renewal to any of those staff members, or to any other staff members, any other teaching staff members.
Rich, just a question regarding resignations. I understand this, because I'm here about someone that seems to have a medical condition or some other unforeseen issue that prompted them to resign. Does it get waived in those situations, or is it patterned from regardless of the reason?
There's a clause that they can request a waiver.
Okay.
Yes. And that the situation you described would be a situation where we would like to grant that.
Thank you.
I'm going to make motion to approve the 2023-24 Notice of Individual Teacher Contract Renewal Letters, including the increase to the liquidated damages fees, and the 2023-24 Listing of Active Teachers effective July 1st, 2023, as presented.
I'll second that. Okay. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave. How about that? Co-seconded, or whatever. As you just heard, Rick outlined for you. Questions on the motion? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, that clearly passes.
Next up was a substitute teacher and aide update. The HR committee reviewed information about our substitutes for teacher and aide positions, which are contracted through Teachers on Call. The current contract with Teachers on Call runs through June 30th, 2024. Work that Teachers on Call does takes a lot of the burden off of our staff, helps get the necessary subs into our filings on a daily basis. This is just kind of an informational thing, so, any thing on that, Rich?
No, I'm going to clear our staff.
All right, any questions on that? Okay, my last item is discussion and possible action on HSA plan distribution schedule. Attached in board docs is a memo from Chris and Carrie on this topic. The HR committee reviewed the impact of the HSA distribution schedule that was approved in May of 2022. This schedule that was approved a year ago was done in order to frackle payments from staff so that they would have funds available to them when the plan year started on July 1st. Current plan includes a 25% upfront payment with semi-monthly payments throughout the remainder of the year. The attached memo details the unintended consequences and inefficiencies of the current distribution schedule, such as overpaying staff who resign, and potential compliance concerns. Lead payroll and accounting specialist Deborah Gitsen was at our meeting and further explained some of these issues to us. I see she is here tonight, in case anyone has any questions for her. Based on the details outlined in the memo, HR committee is recommending movement to a semi-monthly payment system, with the proposal, school year employees on the HSA plan will continue to have payments for the months of July and August under June 30th payroll.
Do new hires over the summer, do they start receiving paychecks prior to August? I'm just wondering that, if someone's hired during summer months, do they forego an HSA payment until August, or is this a pan about?
I'll let Deborah answer that, okay? Or Carrie.
Okay.
Come on up.
Sure. I don't know if you need to try. So, I want to make sure I understood the question you're wondering about new hires, if they're hired over the summer months?
Yes.
Okay, so if they are a school year employee starting in September, the answer to that would be no, because they haven't started working for the district in any capacity yet over the summer, they wouldn't have any paychecks or benefits for their role to them. However, those that are year-round employees, if there are any replacements that were hiring over the summer during that period, then yes, their benefits would start on their first, whichever paycheck, they're first eligible to start receiving wages.
Perfect, thank you.
So the biggest, the biggest impact would be if we have someone on our staff who wasn't on the HSA and moves to the HSA for the coming year, or has been on the HSA. With this plan, and Deborah, you can speak to this a little bit too, so that folks are aware of this before they make their vote, but the payment for the months of July and August is detailed there, would come on that second paycheck in June, so there would be some front loading, if you will.
Yes.
Do you want to speak to that, Deborah?
Yeah, absolutely. So, in essence, anyone that's continuing would still receive the months of July and August this year. So basically, we take the $5,500 and we calculate that over the 12 months of benefit coverage that they receive, and we give them $450.33 for each month that they're eligible for the benefit. So for July and August, those open and rolling, they would get $916.66, and this is referring to the family plan. And then anyone continuing would also receive that as well, that $916.66.
Rich, we need to clarify that year-round employees who were receiving a quarterly payment in July will now receive semi-monthly payments. So that's going to be payroll that are living school year employees.
I think it makes a lot of sense, the off-cycle payroll and unique payrolls are pretty significant labor to employ and put into place, and I just think holistically, this makes a lot of sense, because we discussed it like last year at this time, and I always spark going to something that is initially more less difficult to handle, I guess. So, I would move to modify the current HSA employer contributions to a system of semi-monthly payments.
Second.
Okay, you heard the motion Dave offered, and seconded by Rick to modify our HSA employer contribution timing to a semi-monthly payment. Questions on that? All in favor of approval of the motion on the floor signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes.
Thank you.
And Deborah?
That's it, Joe.
Okay, good enough. So we'll pass Human Resources, where you have the new business, and the first item there is the Wisconsin OPEB Trust, and a potential change for us to join the CISA 6 group, and I'm going to have, who's going to help me, it's Carrie, are you going to walk them through? You could have stayed, I guess, except.
But in fact, we have to walk through, we have to go through every page.
Line by line?
Line by line.
All right, we're excited.
Okay, so if you remember, at our April 19 Finance Committee meeting, Todd Kelly, who was with CISA 6, presented information about the Wisconsin OPEB Trust, which is a cooperative that CISA 6 facilitates. And you may also recall that part of the reason we're speaking to them is with the change in our post-employment benefit, where we are going to contribute to employees' 403B accounts with that catch-up plan, that we are looking to invest that money now so that our employees will not only have that dollar amount, but the interest that is accrued by the time that they become eligible to receive it. So in order to do that, we need to establish a trust for that purpose. And so, in your documentation, there are several things, and I grabbed my own piece of paper, but I'll make it up. So, in board docs, we have this broken up. So the first letter, A, is a letter from Julia Lewis, who is the attorney that works for this Wisconsin OPEB Trust Cooperative. And she outlines the different parties that are involved in the cooperative. And then following that, there are two more agenda items that are separate motions, they're broken up because they do different things. The first is the Investment Advisory Agreement, and, I'm sorry, that's my apologies. The first one is creating the trust, and then creating the custody agreement and appointing a trustee. And the Wisconsin OPEB Trust then is the custodian, and they appoint BMO as the trustee. And then the second resolution is in adopting the Wisconsin OPEB Trust Investment Advisory Agreement, and then appointing the investment manager, and the investment manager is PMA. You may recall, PMA, when we do cash flow modeling, they work with school districts. So this is to kind of finalize what we started and get the, actually, you're finalizing and getting things in motion at the same time, so we can get the trust set up and then begin funding to implement the plan. And do committee members want to add anything else about the presentation? This was a document that we had looked at when Todd talked to us. Did you want to add anything to, did you want to add anything?
I guess just going to reiterate what we had discussed last week, the CISA 6 has a lot in this range, and it's a lot of experience with school districts, there's like 52 members across the state who manage over 140 million assets, and then one of the things I've jumped out being, having seen their retirement plans over years, 38 basis points, or 0.38% administrative for operating, which is very, very efficient, so I think just given the nature of their experience and the very reasonable fee of which they provide services that makes this a good for us.
They will also provide consulting services, attorney information if we needed on what we're doing, so they will be a resource for us as well, as we move forward if we have any questions when we aren't implementing or how we manage. So in board docs, there are the where as and therefore be resolved, but you don't need to read the entire document, I believe that there's a summary motion in there for you that will be sufficient.
I would move that the Board of Education authorize an adaptation of the Wisconsin OPEB Trust and Custody Agreement, appoint Leo Harris Bank N.A. as trustee and custodian, and authorize the superintendent or his designate to carry out all related obligations.
I'll second that.
Thank you. That motion from Dave, seconded by Rick, to formalize our joining the OPEB Trust Custody Agreement. Questions from the board? Everyone understands what we're doing with this? All in favor of approval of the motion on the floor signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, that clearly passes.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education authorize the adoption of the Investment Advisory Agreement, appoint PMA Financial Networks as the investment advisor for the district's Fund 73 Employment Benefit Trust, and authorize the superintendent or his designate to carry out all related obligations.
Okay.
Thank you. That motion is from Rick, seconded by Jennifer, to officially adopt, or authorize us to use the PMA Financial Post as our investment advisor. Questions on the motion on the floor? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, that clearly passes. Thank you, Carrie. All right, D on new business, and I see Julia making her way up, is discussion and possible action on our 2023-24 CISA 2 Annual Contract.
All right, so I'm going to go over the memo that I sent to you earlier, so every year, the board approves our CISA contracts. CISA stands for Cooperative Educational Service Agency, we have 12 CISA's in the state, CISA 2 is our region, and they support about 70 school districts. In the table, I just provided a chart with the service that we have and the estimated cost, and then just a brief explanation. So some of these services are very predictable, they're the same every year, and some of them are based on our students with disabilities who have IEP services or need, and that's the cost associated with it, it's just based on need, not per student. So if we just look at that chart, the Professional Resource Center is something that we have purchased for quite a while. It is a service that allows our special ed staff and related service providers to check out technology, to check out curriculum, just for us to kind of analyze those tools and see if we want to purchase that with our own district dollars, so that's a nice offering that CISA provides. And then if you get that service, the next one down, Assistive Tech Academy, that is at a much cheaper cost because of the Professional Resource Center. We have an AT team who is exceptional in our district, and we have more people allocated to that team now so that we can continue with our assistive tech initiatives moving forward. So that is a wonderful resource, they have five AT team professional development opportunities this year alone, and CISA 2 does a really nice job with that, so we're going to continue to have a team go through that. Educational Audiology, so this is one of the services that is IEP-based, so it's based on our students with disabilities who have educational audiology service minutes. And so that is an estimated cost based on how many students and their need for that service. So this year, we currently have nine, next year, we're going to start with eight, that can change based on who comes in and who leaves our district that have audiology services. And then the coaching and curriculum, we haven't hammered that out yet, we have some sort of professional development every year for coaching and curriculum. Some of those initiatives are co-teaching, co-plan, co-serv, there's some UDL, which is Universal Design for Learning, work that we've been doing. Our needs are still being assessed at the moment, we know that we do want some coaching or consultation or observations, we just don't know how much yet, so that is to be determined. And then under that is the Transition Advisory Network, that is a fixed cost, we have, Declan is our representative that goes to the transition meetings, and then he comes back and delivers the information to our special ed teachers who have, who service any child with an IEP 14 or older, because that is a legal obligation on those IEPs. So another wonderful resource from CISA 2 for our special ed teachers. And then on the second page, we have our Physical Therapist Assistant, so this is similar to the audologist cost that we have, again, based on student need and their IEP services. So this year, we planned for the PTA from CISA 2 to come a half day once a week, and this was to alleviate some of the workload from our, from our physical therapists, from our district physical therapists, because her caseload is high and the needs are high. That was not enough time, we have increased student caseload and need for our PTA services, so we did increase that PTA to one full day a week instead of just a half a day. So that's the estimated cost there for that one day a week moving into next year. Again, if our needs decrease, it's not based on the student, it's based on the service that's provided, so that could go down as well. that's provided, so that could go down as well. Any questions on our annual contract?
Coaching and curriculum, curriculum and coaching. Is there, is there no support that they provide at the seventh and eighth level? I notice it says that they co-plan and co- teach at Northside and High School, but I'm just curious, is that sort of not offered at the middle school or?
It's offered at any level that would like a service or have initiatives that they're moving forward. So we did co-teaching at the middle school, we did UDL work at the middle school. Remember, the middle school was kind of targeted because of our disproportionality a few years ago, and so we had funds that we had to allocate that were outside of CISA because of that. Now we are off that list and moving forward in our special ed programming, and it's pretty solid at the middle school. But yes, if they, there are, that needs assessment is just, I shouldn't have put Northside in the high school. All of the schools are talking about what that could potentially look like for them. And then it's a simple, quick call with CISA II to say, this is what we would like to have you offer us, and then we sign a contract, so.
Good.
That is actually something that can be done.
Is the fee scheduled for the 22-23 school year or is it the 23-24? On the, on the header for the chart, it says 22-23, I'm just curious about.
Oh, that's, that's actually, it's 23-24.
Okay.
Good catch.
Julie, what is the typical day for the physical therapist assistant? Like, how long are they here? How many students? Like, what, what does their day look like?
His contract, if we keep all of the students that he has, he is non-staff. So he is, he would get students who have weekly minutes. So our, our physical therapist will write a treatment plan, write goals for an IEP, and then he executes those services, whatever it looks like. So he could be working on coordination, mobility, navigating the educational environment more independently. He could be doing that at recess or in the hallway or in the cafeteria or in a classroom, but he is go-go-go-go-go providing a physical therapy service from the moment he gets here until he leaves. Then he consults with our PT to basically say, here's the progress, here's what's happening, here's some of the therapy that I noticed or that I delivered today, and then he comes the following Monday. So he takes whatever is in that plan and he executes it. But all of that plan is created from our district's physical therapist.
Is it always the same person?
Yes. Yep, and that's the nice part about it. He's wonderful.
Julie, first of all, big fan of CISA II, kind of worked in review, so what I'm going to say is positive.
Great.
I'm wondering, as a point of order with the coaching and curriculum being TBD, what are we actually going to be moving there? Is that open-ended? Is there a dollar figure that we can put on that or?
I don't know what historically has been, I think it's always been approved, Susan. Previous memos have had TBD, but I don't know specifically if you have to do anything beyond the, the approval of the general contract.
Yeah, I think in, in general, we, we don't know how mu, at this point, we don't know how much we'll be using that service throughout the year, and it isn't additional budgeted amount, it's part of our, our, either through our special education department or through curriculum instruction built into their budget. Thank you.
I would just like to say I've seen a lot of these in use. I've been a meeting to where I've been posted, used on, we can update the work that you and the team do. The presentation on assistive technology was fantastic, and a lot that I didn't know was provided, support for the dollars seemed quite minimal for, to support that team, so thank you for the work that you guys did.
Any other questions for Julia?
Make a motion to approve the 2023-24 CISA II annual contract presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave to approve our annual contract arrangement with CISA II. Questions?
Question, do we need to change the motion given that the header is wrong? Is that present?
Well, the motion is correct, so let's go with that and understand that the header was meant to be the other way. Any other questions on the motion? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Julia. That clearly passes. And that'll transition me to, letter E is 2023-24 Board Committees, Quaspy Delegates, and Building Reps. Then I had Charlie share out with everybody, and a bit of a, an update that we do every year as some folks transition on to our committees and off, of course, with our changeover. Questions for anyone? That's done by appointment in the president, that's a policy obligation that I have, and just had an overarching goal there of some continuity and utilizing people's strengths as best I could, and really appreciate everyone's kind of team effort, I guess, across all of our committees. So if we don't have questions there, that's an info piece. 2023-24 School Board Calendar is also an info piece. We don't take action on this, but we do set up a calendar a year at a time. Highlighted, I did so in our orientation book part for our newer board members so that they get a framework for when we meet, it's the second and fourth Mondays, unless there are exceptions. Occasionally can call a special meeting if there's a topic that demands that between our regular schedule, but that notwithstanding, the schedule you got there is what we're going to attempt to abide by moving forward.
A couple of things to note on that to make sure people are alert to, in August, the meetings are on the 7th and the 21st, and the 21st is our annual meeting, so mark that on your calendars. And then the one month that we don't have two meetings is in March, that traditionally with our spring break, in March, we typically have just one meeting scheduled.
Also December.
Oh, yeah, March and December. Thank you.
All right, we'll move beyond that if there are no other questions, and that takes me up to miscellaneous. The statin report comes first. It's attached to board docs for you to see the transitions in our staffing needs.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff report presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Rick's motion, seconded by Dave to approve the statin report. Questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Gifts and donations are included, 42.
I'll need to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
Second.
Thank you. Jennifer's motion, seconded by Rick, is to approve the gifts and donations to the district with gratitude. Questions on donations? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. And then last but not least, our submitting date.
We have our next regularly scheduled board meeting on Monday, May 22nd at 6:30 here in the PBC District Office, that's two weeks from tonight. Coming up on Wednesday of this week, we have the first of a series of HR committee meetings. You can see those listed on May 10th, May 17th, and May 24th. You can see the times that are listed, those will all be in the first floor conference room. Those are two big hit work with Linda Mont on changes to the administrator and supervisors' post-employment retirement benefits. So as we did, remember, we went through that process first with teachers and support staff, and it would be a little bit nuanced with our, with our administrators and supervisors because they have contracts in place, but Linda Mont will lead us through that work at those three meetings. Next week, Wednesday, or excuse me, next week, Tuesday, on May 16th, we have, the board has a legal workshop on the roles and responsibilities of the school board with our, our school's attorney, Shayna Lewis. That will be 6:30 here in the PBC. And then there's a Finance and Transportation Joint Committee meeting on May 17th at noon in the first floor conference room. We also are finalizing dates for the HR committee to begin meeting with the Teachers Association. Carly's been collecting dates in June that are available for folks, and we'll, we'll reach out to the HR committee on, on some possible dates to get those firmed up.
All right, questions on any of those? I am exhausted.
I'll go for you, Jennifer.
Second. Rick and Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Forty-two minutes.